...kind of pushing meeting to work. If you would please rise and speak with me. My pleasure to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, the universal, the living, the justice, the law. Okay, can I have a roll call, please? Sue?
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Here.
Commissioner Holst.
Here.
Commissioner Gadula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers is absent, and Chair Ellis.
Here. Do I have a motion to excuse Mr. Chambers if I can make a motion to approve his absence? Support?
I'll support it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okey doke. Approval of this night's agenda, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to approve that.
Any support?
I'll support.
Any discussion? Just thought first. Show people your business in front of the master plan. Is it gonna take how long to think the summary of the national meeting?
As long as you guys, as long as you guys want it to take, I don't envision it taking too, too, it's totally up to you. If you're gonna do that, that's fine. If not, I don't plan on spending two hours on it or anything, but I don't know how long this session could go, so there's a lot there, so it's up to you. If you wanna switch it around, that's fine, if not.
Doesn't matter. Is there any support? Are you making a motion this week? I'm just asking if you want to. Do you want to? Then we can have a motion. We can do that. Make a motion.
Then I'll support it. We might as well keep this going.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Okay, well, good new business in front of old business. Now, do I have a motion to support the agenda as changed?
I support it.
That's okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Okay. Very good. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to support this?
I'll motion.
Any second?
One second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Very good. What were the comments at this time concerning any items not on the agenda? This is a time to voice your concerns or your compliments that are not on the agenda. Okay, I will close that. And on to new business. Site plan. Do we have a representative to tell us a little bit about what's going on? Please come up to the podium and state your name and how you're affiliated.
My name is Matt Cole of Zonia Associates. I'm the engineer for ICCF in this project. We were reviewed a little bit over eighteen months ago, so this is probably a familiar project to anyone who's still on the board. So, at the southeast corner of Main Street and Jefferson, there's an existing house there that from operates, and there's some vacant lots there where there used to be some houses, and they were torn down, proposing two multi-unit, one-story buildings there, and then one duplex building off of Kent Street. It's all in that property. These are for lower-income individuals who need some assistance. They're generally single individuals, sometimes someone with kids. Again, they're on the lower income level, and so they're, they don't have a lot of vehicles, so although our proposed parking plan has fewer than what the typical recommendation is for residential, we think operationally that'll work, and as Andy mentioned in his review, there is on-street parking nearby and things of that nature as well. As far as any changes that have occurred since you would have seen it eighteen-plus months ago, I don't think there's really anything other than maybe, I can't remember when we did this, but we did get rid of one of the units and put in laundry facilities, so that might be a change that you didn't see. But otherwise, as far as the site layout, buildings go, and the parking, and the trash, and landscaping, and all of that, nothing's changed. So, I'm just here to answer any questions anyone has, refresh or anything else. Obviously, we have a few team members here if you have any questions about the operations.
Thank you, Matt. Andy, would you care to run us through the site plan?
Sure, thank you. So, we, as Mr. Cole mentioned, we looked this, looked at this about a year and a half ago. It was approved by the planning commission at that time, but your zoning ordinance, like most, has a provision in there that says if you approve a site plan, or some of them may use permit, and there isn't any construction activity on the property within a certain period of time, typically it's a year or eighteen months, then that approval expires. And so, in this case, it's been a while. There were no extensions given, so the site plan approval expired, so they're basically here asking for approval of the same thing for which they were approved a couple of years ago. I agree with, with Mr. Cole as well, that nothing has really changed on the site plan. This is the exact same layout, aside from a few, you know, very small details here and there. The layout's the same, they're both each other's same. The parking, the location size of the parking lot's the same, the dimensions of all the parking spaces, the quantity of landscaping is all the same. It comes through location, the sidewalk pathways and all that, it's all the same. So, from an overall layout perspective, we don't have any, any significant concerns. This property is zoned mixed-use, which allows for something like this. It also incurred as a very, you know, human-scale walkable pattern, so we're happy with this plan to see, you know, buildings that are built towards Main Street, and the building on Kent Street is built sort of based towards Kent Street. There's a nice kind of sidewalk network provided that connects the buildings and everything within the property, as well as those to the Chatham Street network. We did have the same question, I guess it's been answered now, so we did notice that we're labeled as the eight flexes, which are the two buildings that front Main Street. Those are one-story buildings that originally had eight units in them. Each one of those buildings, according to the floor plans, has one, what would be a unit that's removed and has been converted into a laundry facility for the residents. So, there's really two seven-unit buildings, and then there's the duplex that's in spaces Kent Street on this other side of the property. In our staff report, we just kind of walked through some of the main issues. This is pretty much the same staff report as I gave you a couple of years ago, because it's the same, everything else is the same. So, just some of the common questions that come up. One of them is the number of uses on a lot, so the zoning ordinance will typically say that there's only one principal and use for principal building permitted per parcel. You could argue here that this property has three, because there's three different buildings that'll each contain residences in it. But there is a provision in there for things where you have a sort of a planned development where there's shared parking and landscaping and trash and stuff like that, similar to what you would see for like a strip center, commercial development, or apartment complex or something like that. So, we view this in the same way. There's sharing a parking lot, there's shared landscaping, there's shared sidewalks, and it's all kind of one single cohesive development. So, we would consider that one use collectively instead of three different uses all in the same parcel. All of the setbacks and dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance are met. The landscaping requirements are met. There are, there were a couple of areas, you know, where they, there's a little less landscaping that is, than is ordinarily required, particularly what's required for the front of Chelan Main Street. There's not really room for that, and I don't think it's necessary, given the, the location and what's there. So, we're comfortable with the landscaping as is proposed, and as you know, the zoning ordinance gives the planning commission quite a bit of latitude to kind of require, you know, to modify up or down landscaping requirements of the zoning ordinance. There are no whole mounted light fixtures shown on the site plan. We walked through an analysis of the parking spaces on the, on the project, so there are twenty-six parking spaces shown within that parking lot, which I think is gonna be pretty close to what the actual demand ends up being for those, for those units. But as Mr. Cole pointed out, also, there's zoning ordinance in your downtown, which is C2, and in your mixed-use districts. In addition to the off-street requirements, developers are permitted to count on-street public spaces or off-street public parking spaces towards that. And the idea, of course, is that when you're in a more urban environment like downtown, well, you're, it's physically impossible to fit enough parking spaces on a site to accommodate everything. So, because there's public parking available and nearby that can be utilized, we can count that towards the minimum requirement. In that case, there's, there's quite a bit of it around. There's, you know, at least thirteen just on the street, along Main Street, and then there's additional on-street parking on the north side of Main, and a bunch of other places within four hundred feet of that property. So, there's, there's, I don't think they're gonna need that much on-street parking if any, because what is provided off-street, I think, really satisfies what most of the need is going to be, to the extent that they're short the on-street parking. It's public, it's easily gonna cover what the minimum requirement is for the zoning ordinance. It's worth noting that the property is within the one-hundred-year floodplain. There's a base flood elevation of six hundred and thirty-five point ten feet, so that means they have to build all the buildings to at least six eighty-six point ten. They met that by, by about one point four feet, so each of the buildings, they're gonna have to bring in some fill on the building, so the lowest habitable floor of the building has gotta be at least one foot above that one-hundred-year floodplain standard. So, some fill would have to be brought in, and they'll have to obtain a Part 31 permit from Eagle, formerly the DQ, to have that done. They may be required to take the compensating cuts somewhere else within the floodplain, you know, area nearby to kind of offset the fill that they're bringing in, so they don't artificially raise the flood level in the city. That is something that we've worked with other applicants on in the past, and so with and when they get ready to construct, you know, the city can work with them to identify a site, and Eagle will tell them how much, you know, they need to take out and, and things like that, so they're, so they're, so they're taking out just as much as they're working in. We also had our engineering staff take a look at the stormwater plan that was provided. He had no concerns. The rest of the, so the grading on the site was acceptable. One of the things that I asked him to look for was to make sure that any of the, because they have to bring in fill on the property, we didn't want to see any of that stormwater flowing onto the adjacent properties, but they've proposed to design and grade the site so that that'll be captured on-site and then directed towards, towards the proposed storms or existing storm structures on the property. The detention bases and pipes are appropriately sized. The soil erosion and sedimentation control measures are adequate as well, so we don't have any significant concerns there. With respect to the site plan review standards, if it's okay with you, I'll just kind of go through those fairly quickly.
Please.
And then, I guess if there's any public comments or questions, you can accept those and, you know, prior to any, any commission preparation, make the decision on this. So, the first standard is that the proposed uses will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, and that the uses and structures shall be calculated into account in property size of the property, adjoining property, et cetera. You know, here, this is an area that's, you know, planned zone for, for mixed uses, which would include multifamily residential, which is what's proposed here. These are pedestrian-oriented buildings that are generally compatible with the scale of the street and provide the infill on vacant properties. So, it's important to recognize that, especially with the two buildings in the street on our front Main Street, according to the rendings, these will be one-story buildings. So, it's not like this is gonna be a three-story thing that's way too tall of a character for the heritage. The one-story structure is facing Main Street, and the duplex that's gonna be on Kent Street in the back is gonna be a two-story structure. So, nothing outrageously tall or overly dense as far as that's concerned. We do know obviously they're gonna have to, to bring in some fill, which is gonna make it look a little bit taller than you would ordinarily see, so you can't build it accurate, because it'll be three or four feet below the flood level. So, they will be a little bit taller, but again, it's not even gonna look tall as a two-story building here. Item B, safe, convenient, uncongested, and well-defined pedestrian circulation shall be provided. The sidewalks are accessible. The site is well-designed with the parking lot access not being located on Main Street, which is a benefit. Location of the sidewalks internally, we think, is good. The dumpster and everything else is kind of located in the way where if it's, if it's accessible, everyone should be able to take a sidewalk internally to reach the parking lot, to reach trash service, and there's a little accessory building for storage that's also proposed on the site. So, we don't have any concerns with that. Item C, the arrangement of public or private popular and pedestrian connections shall be planned to provide a safe and efficient circulation system for traffic within the city, similar to the comment above. The buildings are well-connected to the city sidewalk network, and the parking lot is connected to the city street net, network in about just the way as you can do with the site. Item D, addresses the removal or alteration of significant natural features. Shall be restricted to those areas that are necessary to develop the site. This is a, you know, vacant property in the city, so there aren't any significant natural features on that property that we have. In terms of, obviously, we're aware of the floodplain issue, and there's gonna have to be a permit granted by Eagle to do any fill in floodplain, which we talked about earlier. Item E, satisfactory assurance shall be provided that the requirements of the city shall be met, which would be addressed at the condition of approval. And then F, as the general purposes and spirit of this ordinance and the national plan shall be maintained. As I mentioned before, the property is zoned mixed-use. In the 2007 master plan, the site is within the downtown future land use designation, which is intended to permit a mixture of residential office and commercial land uses and traditional Main Street-style buildings. It also says that development in downtown should be pedestrian-scale and built to complement existing downtown buildings. So, this isn't really a typical downtown-style development, but certainly it's a, it's a pedestrian-oriented, human-scale project that, you know, accomplishes most of the objectives of the, of the existing plan. It's worth noting that while it's in draft form, the draft master plan has that property in what is called the corridor mixed-use designations, and the text, which is also in draft form for that designation, would support single, two-family, and multifamily residential settlement. Again, as long as it's arranged in a, in a traditional walkable pattern. So, that's not an adopted plan, but that's, that's where the draft plan is heading, as we talked about a couple of months ago. So, we think this is compatible with the existing plan, and with, with the way that the draft plan is being, has been drafted so far, we think it would be compatible with that, too. So, we did recommend approval of the site plan, again. Here, we have proposed six conditions. The several are conditions that we put pretty much on everything. Really, the only significant condition for your report purposes is that the applicant needs to be aware of this, a Part 31 permit from Eagle for the floodplain development, because that is something that they'll have to address. The rest of the stuff is kind of part of the regulated process of the city where everything has to be approved by every other appropriate agency. They have to pay their fees, make sure they've, you know, got approval for entire apartment, EPW, et cetera. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you for questions or comments from the public.
Well, I'd like to, I guess, hear from the public, their concerns or questions, but I, if you do come up, I would ask you to address the council, not the applicant. Then, little discussion, and talk about things. First, I want to give the public a chance to speak. Please, when you come up, state your name, where you live, please.
Okay. My name's John Lehrer. I'm at 524 East Main Street. That would be the house on the east side of this proposed project, same side of the street. Okay. I've seen some pictures of this. It might be the same picture you have here. I don't know. On this east side, I, I wanna know how this building is being constructed. Is it sitting up on a retaining wall vertically up, or is it just gonna have soil on a slant like they do at 510 on Kent Street with slope?
Um, let me...
See, I see some pictures here that tend me to believe that, but then...
So, I think some, I mean, Matt, you can probably address this better than me, but it looks like this, there will be some fill brought in to the site.
Well, that, that's, that's exactly what I'm trying to bring up, is this slope off, and that has, now we're gonna have a question, setback.
Well, the setback is measured from the wall of the building to the...
Well, I, I don't know about that, but you have, when you have this thing up on, on a, on a slope, or build up on a hill, that hill is part of that structure. The setback should come from the end of the slope, not from the side of the building.
The setback is measured from the building.
The buildup is required. You said it.
Right, but the setback is measured from the building wall, and I think consistent with that.
Well, I just, I disagree. It should be, it's measured from the structure, not, not a building wall, but from the structure. I think you're, you're, your words are a little...
No, the zoning ordinance clearly says it's measured from the wall of the building.
Well, if you have slope here, that, that would slope right into my property, for example. It'd be ten feet long, and the slope would end up right at my property, and the water, whenever it rains, would just run right over there. And there's, there's a lot of people, I mean, you probably can't figure this out, but there's a house over at 510 on Kent Street that's built up on slope exactly like this, what they, what they're proposing here, I think, because I haven't really seen a, a good picture of this yet, and they have a problem with water, too.
Sorry, I wanted to interrupt you, but I wanna kind of limit it to three minutes, so if you have other points, we'll address those.
Well, the setback, because there's gonna be a slope on this, that'll set concerns, like I said, with the slope, and, and, and what's the slope supposed to be? A one-to-one slope, two-to-one slope, three-to-one slope? You've got rain, and you've got rain problems. The rain's gonna just come right over into our yard, flood our basement, if we have a basement. The parking issue, they wanna put like one parking unit per every unit in here. They have ten units over at the current 504, and they want seventeen here, and, and basically they want one unit per apartment, is what they wanna do. There's gonna be cars parked out in the street, more than likely. The idea that, you know, this, this is supposed to be, that people don't have cars, is, is, there's about three people in the current building that don't have cars, and they're very low-income people, they're dishwashers of the Kaisers, and a few other people. But these new units they're gonna be putting in here are not for the same price if they're gonna be renting out with their current 504. These units here are gonna be much more expensive than that, and those people, more than likely, are gonna have more cars. Currently, at, at 504, you, some people may pay $350 a month for a unit. These here units are gonna be going, according to Wendy, I haven't talked to her, from between $750 and $950, which is what they're currently saying. More than likely, these, there's gonna be cars, more than one car per unit, and they're gonna be parked out in the street, like you said, you know? And the problem with that is it, you've got an ordinance in this town against parking, and I, it's supposed to be two and six are not supposed to be on the street, but there's gonna be cars on the street.
Yeah, what's in there?
And, okay. Also, a pet area. Is there gonna be a pet area on this? Other than my backyard? Well, that's all the time I can have. I can go on longer, but if you want to cut me off.
Thirty seconds.
Well, I just think that, you know, you have to look this over. My, my biggest concern is the slope, because as far as I'm concerned, just like I told him, most, most of the time, I mean, you have said that, the area is measured from the property line to any structure. That's the basic definition of, of a setback. Now, he wants to use building line, that's fine, but it's the structure, and when you have slope coming off that, it's ten-foot-long slope required, that becomes part of that structure, and the setback should be, should be measured from the end of the slope, not from the building.
Okay.
Because at the end of the slope would be right in, right on, on my property. Okay. Well, thanks.
Thank you. Those are good questions. I appreciate your thoughts. That's a good question about the slope. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Pearl Barkis, 215 West Main Street. I'm also the owner of Liberty Weavers. First of all, I want to thank, thank you guys for doing what you want, are doing, because it's an important job, and we appreciate that here in the city. Thank you. Not always easy to understand that. I also want to thank Wendy and Fromm for doing this, because it's a wonderful thing. And I am, I am a Fromm supporter. I, I very much believe in everything they do. My concern is, and I guess it kind of bounces off of what John's talking about, is the elevation, and I understand we're in a floodplain. I was here two years ago, and Andy mentioned, nothing has changed in two years. Two years ago, I asked that there be some thoughts as to handicap access. You want a walkable city, and I'm sure, I'm sure that that's in the master plan. Not everybody walks on two legs. And when I say that, a lot of people think, well, this doesn't affect me. Well, it does affect me. I employ individuals with special needs. I currently have two individuals who full-time use wheelchairs. One who has served with a policy, who was very difficult for her to get over a three-inch step at our building. We took the effort to modify our building. It's an 1883 building. They didn't think about handicap access at that point. We've added a ramp, we've added a ramp into our door, we've widened our boundary door. Was it expensive? Yes. Was it worthwhile? It was life-changing. What I fear with this situation, and I'm not sure what the elevation is, Andy, was that, Andy? We know how high it has to be raised, from ground level?
It's about four feet and more, I'd say. Is that kind of all right? Man, five and a half? Five and a half feet?
Four, five and a half feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I've looked around. Within a block of my business, there are two handicap-accessible buildings, other than those that are naturally accessible, a post office. Three minutes is not enough. I'm just telling you. City Council wants five.
We're extending it, just...
Okay, four and a half feet, post office, four and a half feet. It's a one inch for every foot of elevation, or it's one foot for every inch of elevation. There needs to be handicap access. They're providing housing for people that have challenges. We live twenty-four steps up. Twenty-four steps is a long ways. Both my husband and I have fallen on those steps. It's a liability issue. You're not allowing those with handicaps to come in. And again, it's also helpful for people in the community. Walkable, walkable. Stairs aren't fun. They have to move in. It's not just for handicap people. You gotta carry your refrigerator up, your laundry up, your groceries up every time. Fair Housing Act, residential units are required, or more units are required to have accessible housing. There is an exception if it's very, very difficult to happen, so I'm assuming that's what they're leaning on. It was very, very difficult to make my people then accessible, but I did it because I care about people. Post office, well, our, the Charlotte post office, we were in Charlotte this weekend, it's at least five feet high. It's accessible. I realize it's a, a government building. Marty Chambers, last time, mentioned raising the parking lot. Why not raise the parking lot a foot? Then you don't have to raise the, the ramps so high. It may cause an issue there. I've heard the, someone say, it's impossible. Nothing's impossible. Take the time to figure it out. This is going to affect people like the people that work at my business, maybe not the people that work at Flat River Grill, maybe not the people that work at Hot Dog, but it does affect my people. I would like my people to have housing as well. They would very much qualify, so please consider their needs and the needs of future residents. It's not just the ones this year or the next year. That building's gonna outlive all of us. We need to do better. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public concerns, comments?
Thank you, everybody. My name is Wendy Price, from...
So one of the first things that came up, I heard Andy talk about the Eagle permit. So we have been issued an Eagle permit. It was issued September first, twenty twenty-three, and it is good through September first, twenty twenty-eight. Another thing I wanted to comment on is we are going to do the compensation cut at In Pet Church. So they have already, we've, that was submitted with the plan to Eagle and this down the way in the same floodplain. So they have approved that change, and overall, we have to move about two thousand cubic yards of, we have to bring in two thousand cubic yards into the site, and we will be removing just over two thousand at In Pet Church site. So that is there. And then also, you know, we'll do our best to make sure that the water flow, according to our plan and everything, the water flow stays as it is. And I think Andy, you attested to that as well, that we're not modifying the waterfall in any way. And as we talked about before, I have a brother who's in a wheelchair, and if we could do it, I would love to do it, but with this site being in a floodplain, recognizing in some spots, we have to go about five and a half feet, and at others, up to nine feet. But please know that this is our, not going to be our only housing project, and as we go into the future, it's close to my heart as well, and so I hear what you're saying. I totally hear you. So that's it. Thank you.
Any other discussions? Matt, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I can add a little bit. So as far as the slope...
And speaking of that, please.
So as far as the slope with the property about ten feet away, the elevation grade change is two feet higher, so it's about a one-on-five or a twenty percent slope. So if that gives you an idea, if you've got a walkout, you know, on the side, it's going to be probably a little bit flatter than the side of your house would be walking from the front to the back. As far as the stormwater right now, the neighbor's stormwater comes onto this property. Obviously, we're not grading on his property, so his water will continue to go onto our property in our catch basin, and that's where our water is going as well. It'll traverse a little bit more to the south, but it already goes a little more south anyway. You can see that on the existing conditions, there's a couple of contour lines where we went beyond property line to show what's happening, and you can see that water's heading towards our property line, kind of southwestward, westerly. So that kind of addresses the grading question. So with a combination of that, so it's about a two-foot grade line to look, you know, not unreasonable, like a one-on-one, and it's still movable, but at the same time, as a result, because of how high we have to go, there is some exposed foundation wall there. And so they try to dress that up in the front along Main Street, so it's not, you know, an eyesore. I think they've got some brick and such along the front edge on that.
Any thought on retaining walls around anymore?
So we did look at that, and essentially, that's what those porches are. That's why we have the porches, because it wasn't a floodplain, we could bring in a bunch of dirt. Well, what if we wouldn't have it as high? We could bring in a bunch of dirt and try and make some of these grades work, but because it's a floodplain, we've got to prove to Eagle that we aren't filling any more than we have to. And so essentially, those porches are retaining walls, and the foundation is a retaining wall. We'll pull out another retaining wall beyond that, and we're just using that to help keep costs down, and then that way, you've got more of a natural buffer, you know, the full ten feet is more of a movable slope as opposed to four feet, and then you have a retaining wall and maybe a flower bed, and then you have the building. That's kind of how we elected to approach it and solve it.
I have two questions for you. One was, someone alluded to the five-foot of concrete on Main Street. What are you going to put on that to dress it up?
So that one doesn't have five feet, because Main Street is already the highest. So my recollection is our finished floor is thirty-six five, and I think we've got the grade of the structure about thirty-four at the front. So it only has about two and a half feet, and I think half that foot is probably a step into the unit. So you're looking at two feet, four steps, which is, you know, kind of matches older houses, where you see that you've got a few steps onto a porch. It's not, you know, the newer houses where it might just be one or two steps.
It's just going to be straight concrete?
Well, the porch would be concrete, but as far as...
Thirty-four inches.
But as far as the siding in the house, I did bring those, maybe. Do you have that, accommodations?
Yes. Is there a way that we can switch the screen so that it was in my computer? So that's the elevation of the building that comes Main Street on that screen here, so hopefully...
My recollection...
It's not working.
No, that will sound...
Yeah, so looking at the drawings, I know you can get them off, but I believe it's a field stone one, and it's actually on the porch, too, on the face of that wall, so it's not concrete.
And this is the picture I've seen.
That's the one you're seeing, and we've got a nicer one here, color rendering. I can pass it around.
This looks like it's just straight concrete, Matt. He's just concerned about that.
We go to color rendering. It shows the duplex.
Andy is powering our system.
Okay. So it's like a full stone or full brick?
Yeah.
And that's like a lot better than the drawing I had.
Yeah. So that's what they're going with on the front. Like I said, the grade, the ground level will be about thirty-four, so only about two and a half feet. So that way, it's not, it doesn't look like it...
Ten times better than the extra I had.
Yeah. So that was one question. Do you have another one?
Yeah, the lighting. What are you planning doing about the lighting? There's a lot of sidewalks around and steps, and there's no lighting plan, is that correct? So we don't have, like, lights in the parking lot? I guess you want to talk about the lights and lighting look on the buildings themselves.
Yeah, so we don't have any pole-mounted lighting that we're proposing at this time. We're looking more at lights on the building that would be full cutoff fixtures that would meet the zoning ordinance. And because of that, generally, we don't do a lighting plan unless something's needed, and we just kind of denote on there, hey, no light poles, and we'll meet the lighting ordinance or fixtures.
Will that sufficiently light the parking lot as well, lighting from the buildings?
I guess the question comes down to sufficient. I mean, it won't be like a Marathon gas station or something like that that's lit up. Will you be able to see out there enough to get by, especially being in the city? We think so. If there isn't an issue, then I guess they can always propose something and come back to city staff and say, hey, it turns out that we need a little bit more light out there than we have now. Because they do have that garage out there, which is right next to the parking lot, so if they ever need it, they could put a light on that. That's probably what I propose to do before you put a light pole out there, because those light poles are eight about five ream. And then that way, usually, neighbors prefer less light, too, so thinking was...
And just that parking lot, and then you have the two entrances going north, and then the garage going south. It just seems like there should be a lot of something there to light the path, and there's sidewalks all over the place and steps. I mean, I know that cost is an issue, but safety, walking in stuff, is also an issue.
Yeah, yeah. So again, we're sure there's going to be some lights. I don't know if they're going to put them in the soft, or if they're going to do full box cutoffs on the wall. Architect's not here on that. It'll be lit up, yes. And as far as the parking lot and that being farther away, that will be as well lit up than the sidewalks, although it'll be downward-facing fixtures, so it's not like you're looking at a neighbor's mercury light, you know, on the back of the barn.
Any other questions for Mike? Wouldn't it be halfway easy to raise that center sidewalk a little bit for handicap to get into both buildings?
So we looked at that, and no, I was, because I knew it was very important to Wendy, and so we looked to see what we could do. The problem is, it's not one inch per foot you have to meet. That's the max slope for a ramp, but otherwise, you need to have five percent, or you've got to have all these levels in, and we looked to see how we could do it, and it came down to we just didn't have enough, really. And you have to go, you know, sometimes you see, like at a zoo or something, where you go off, and then you do a one-eighty, and you go up again and again, and we did that, we'd be filling that whole courtyard in with concrete, so...
I remember this discussion.
Yeah. We looked at it a lot, because it was very important to Wendy. Then we left here, and we looked at it again. And it came down to, yeah, if we didn't have a floodplain, then we didn't, you know, if we didn't have to make Eagle happy, we could raise the parking lot up, and we could make something work. But on this site, because of the floodplain, it doesn't work. So like she said, in the next project, not in a floodplain, we can make sure that we have a wall accessible.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you. Any discussions on this? I mean, I think there's, that's two huge ones, handicap accessible and lighting, and there's steps everywhere.
Yeah. We asked if they could do anything.
I remember that, talking, we talked about going around that far side.
Yeah, that's right. That side off.
Yeah, even if a few of the units had some handicap accessibility, not all of them.
Same, like, the metal wiring did mostly, yeah. It's hard to look on a two-dimensional paper. It's easy on a two-dimensional paper.
Looks good.
If you want to, if you want to, you're still really green, handicap access to entry points, like two points into the building, or it would give you all access.
No, it'd give you some.
It'd give you some.
Two's better than...
Yeah.
Zero's bad, no good. But that's what it has to be, I guess.
I will say, as a woman, I'd like some more lighting in the parking lot. I don't like dark parking lots. I think we need some more lighting in there.
It's very hidden, congested out there.
Yes, it is.
I don't feel...
I think it needs to have some more lighting.
Something on the barn back there, something to grab.
Yeah. I mean, yes, you want safety for walking and stuff, but I also think we need safety in just visibility.
I can't read it. Matt, how far away is that, are those entrances to the building to the parking lot?
From the south side?
On the south side, yes.
Yeah, from the building to the parking lot.
Which means ballpark thirty-five, forty feet.
It'd be nice if there was a pole on each of those little square things that shed light on those three sidewalks at least, and one even by the barn.
And then something over the parking lot.
Good.
Yeah.
Light, light, light.
Yes. And then something over in the front, you're sort of parking lot.
Thoughts?
The one thought would just be, I don't disagree with the idea of the lighting, but just other folks in the neighborhood, the neighbors not wanting to see a parking lot light and structure out of the, out of the room window, but, but yeah, something, I agree with, putting a little bit of some, I guess, show of light.
I mean, you can put step lighting down to help with the steps, too. I guess I'd like to see more of a lighting plan for the parking lot and public or the walkways, I guess, looked at in more depth, and I think...
Main Street's totally public good.
Yeah, Main Street side is good.
Any comments about lighting, thanks, sorry.
Are you affiliated with...
With Fromm, yeah.
Yes, please.
My name's Jan VanderWort. I work at ICCF Community Homes. We've been helping Fromm grow through this process of developing housing for six years now, so we're really excited for where they're at with this. Was here in the last time that this was brought forward. We haven't presented a lighting plan. So Eastbrook Homes is the selected general contractor for this development. They're huge. They build four hundred and fifty houses per year in West Michigan. Landscaping is not fully detailed in this plan yet, and lighting is not, but this can be adequately lit. Sounds like this is growing from an optional to a required, and that's perfectly acceptable. I think one of the biggest concerns about pole lighting is overlighting the residential predominant areas, but the barn building is something that Fromm would be certainly willing to have lighting along the outside edges of, to pull light down towards the parking lot. ICCF in Grand Rapids, we own a lot of buildings that have parking lots that have pole lights, and it is daylight in the parking lot, so trying to find that balance. Also, ballard lighting on walkways can be effective, but they can also become maintenance concerns, so that's why Matt was discussing downward lights off of the sides of the buildings. There's nothing to bump into or break. But yeah, sidewalks will not be pitch black. We just haven't presented a full lighting plan for development yet.
Good, that's...
Thank you.
They could put a couple lights somewhere on the ground, right?
That takes care of that corner.
And what about each building having a corner light shining towards those steps?
That's kind of why I asked, how far it was. Thirty-five feet is pretty substantial.
Well, it's shining on the steps, that's all, and let it go to the parking lot. Like an E light, put the light in the E, kind of shine down towards the steps a little bit.
So I guess I would like that as a condition, to see a lighting plan adequately, you know, address those walkways a little bit more.
I just talked to them, they said, absolutely fine, too, I have a condition that we can prepare a lighting plan and bring it to city staff for approval. That's absolutely fine.
I would make sure that's one of the stipulations.
I guess one of the things I wanted to kind of touch on is the landscape plans we do, I always tell them, this is the mint, this is the bare bones of what we have to do. You can always do more, and we always recommend more, because, you know, let's make the sites as beautiful as you can. So that's kind of where Jan touched on, or we know this is what we have to do, but we're going to do more, it just hasn't been finalized yet. That's kind of where they're at with lighting plan, too. So by all means, they're completely fine, saying, okay, well, once we get that finalized, we'll bring it to the city. Make sure it's not too much, make sure it's enough, and that'd be absolutely fine.
Good. Thank you, too. You wrote that as a condition. The discussion on the handicap accessible, I need more, what are your thoughts?
I'll go with it the way it is, but it is... I'm going to force them, because it's a number of years of flooding across the porch, and you all have to...
I know, we all love Eagle.
Yeah, it's just more stuff than that, you know?
Yeah. Any other ideas on the handicap accessible? We...
I remember when I asked, because I thought it was on, we had ADA parking and ADA access. I thought it, it wasn't required at the time, like, that's what it was my, from what I remember. So I just thought it was weird to have parking and not access.
I remember they, we talked about even just a lift for appliances and stuff, or...
Yeah.
Remember us talking about that last time?
Yeah, we even looked at, because they have those, some amusement parks, right? They have a way to get wheelchairs in on older rides, and we looked at that, and obviously, again, a place that's going to flood, it's not a great place. They have a lot of electricity.
Yeah. Any other ideas?
The center, the center path seems to be those sort of like logical ones, ramping up, or whatever, but that's, if that's still not feasible because of the...